Hey folks, VCS7 here. Welcome back to the channel. Welcome back to Farncen17 and the World Challenge map. Actually, way all the way out to the cow barn here, just cleaning all the wood chips off the trail. Or road. Yeah, no, let's go with trail. Obviously, there's gonna be more because I haven't done things like crunched the stumps, and I'm probably gonna knock another tree or down here or there to... Well, just fatten the road up a little. I have noticed that that terrain tool does cause a fair bit of... Audio glitches. I wish. Video glitches. Especially combined with another material. Ie. At the end here where we've got the dirt over the top. You know, or if you get a pile of sawdust right over the area that's been done, it does end up coming up with some rather odd... Up close, it all looks great. It's when you actually step back a little, it starts to do weird things. But, nothing to be terribly concerned with. So, at least not at this point. And if it becomes a concern, we'll just have to figure out how to not make it a concern. So... And I do believe, actually, that... I am for the most part done with that particular toy. What are we doing here? You can see I've been saving all of this up. Yeah, I worked pretty much through the night again. It is a fresh, brand-new day here. Ooh, how's our chickens doing? Let's get off of there. Have a look at our chickens, shall we? Hello to chickens. Now, you shouldn't have eaten everything. I mean, you're chickens. How much could you consume? Oh, we're doing pretty good, actually. Oh, what do we got here? Okay, I just, I don't think it's actually registered yet, here is the issue. Because, before I signed off yesterday, we were like 3 hours away from a chicken, productivity was 100%, etc. So it maybe just takes a little while to kick in, hopefully. Had some real issues out at the sawmill yesterday as well. Ah, well, we'll see what happens. Yeah, I think it's straightened out now. I had to log out of the game and back in. But it had loaded a pallet with boards. And, well, it actually loaded 3 of them. 2 of them got to the end of the line successfully. The third one seemed to have sunk through the pallet mover. And therefore, it was registering it had a full one, but the pallet mover was also registering as full because the spot where it should have been able to put an empty one, it couldn't. So, yeah, just weirdness. Now, after our little town meeting yesterday, i.e. the comments section, I have taken our proposals in front of the city. And here's kind of what we've decided between us. Oh, I need to go into town. I have a job to do today that requires a piece of equipment I bought yesterday. I don't think I brought it down. So here's the deal. The town is pretty much in as much trouble as it looks like it's in. Ie. Things aren't open, they're kind of run down. Oh, you see, yeah. You think I'm not busy here when you guys aren't looking? Check this out. Yeah, I've done a little bit more login. A little bit more login. Yeah. So... I have in fact cut enough for... Either a bunch of production or a small field and a bunch of production, which I think is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna put a second field in here, and then we're gonna start our production down there. Which brings me back to the town meeting. So, I went before the council and said, "Look, here's the deal. Here's how I'm prepared to help the town get back on its feet, providing the town is willing to help me." So, bottom line, we came to a deal. The town has agreed to lend us $350,000. Now, that's great, but no, we can't go out and buy a brand-new John Deere harvester with it. $100,000 of it, and this is not even the town's idea. This is basically so they qualify for the grant to give us the money. $100,000 of it must be put towards some sort of green project improvement. Ie. Some existing thing must be upgraded to be more green. You know, what I'm talking about. To the tune of 100K. The other 250 must be put into production, and there are stipulations. The stipulation being, and this is what I'm picking up, I bought a leader. That I cannot do any production that will compete with any production being done already in town. So... And when we got into the details of it, I made sure that they were talking actual production. Because the... You know, I can sell my tomatoes to the same place all the other growers around here can sell their tomatoes. If the town decides they're gonna put in a ketchup factory, then I'm not allowed to produce ketchup. If they do it first, you know what I mean? I can sell tomatoes to the ketchup factory, I can do whatever the heck I want with my own produce. Same thing goes for trees. Alright. Now, speaking of trees, that brings us to the sawmill. Now, the sawmill is one of the reasons that we're kind of not supporting the town business. For one, I don't get directly paid for my logs. And, well... Although they do pay well, I don't know, you know, how much of the control of the business is really in our hands that way. Because let's face it, we give them the logs, the next thing I know they're, you know, we're hauling boards over to a pallet factory and they're making pallets out of it. Okay? I suppose, you know? But what I was able to do on that end of it, now... Both the sawmill that makes the boards and the mill that makes the pallets are owned by the same family. Okay, it's a pair of brothers. And they haven't filed, like, the businesses aren't registered as one belonging to one brother and one belonging to the other. They're both registered as belonging to both brothers. So... I talked to the council and managed to convince them that, "Look, I can put a sawmill if I want to." Alright. All I'm gonna be producing is boards. And that's it. I'm not going any further with it, you know? I just need a place I can sell my logs, I can produce wood chips, and then I can sell those wood chips. You know, I'm not manufacturing anything. So we can build a sawmill if we'd like, and we will get to that. However, that is not gonna be the primo important one. The first thing we have to do is deal with the whole $100,000 greenup operation. Well, I have an idea. I don't know if it's exactly what the town had in mind, because I think they were figuring, you know, I'd put something in that would, you know, be more a benefit to them than me. But, I had a look around, and if we have a look in our catalog here, the old farm catalog, a placeable object, we'll find... A shed that will allow us to go green. These solar sheds. You see? Now, that's definitely an upgrade that would... You know, that's a go-green kind of upgrade, isn't it? So if I get rid of the sheds we have up here and drop a couple of those in, that meets the $100,000 requirement. And not only that, it's gonna start making us income, because not only do we have our thermal plant down there taking care of all of our heating needs, right down to our hot water, but we'll also be producing our own electricity. So that's directly gonna get paid back to us off of the hydro grid. So I think that's where our greenup project... As for the rest of it, well... As I said, we're gonna have to get to a point, and that's why I started all this logging back here. To where we can put some stuff down. Now, I think I'm actually gonna start with the slow bee so that we can start producing some honey products. And things like that. So that's kind of what we came to. Now, it seems like a lot of money. Of course, it isn't. You know, make no mistake, the 250K that we're gonna have left toward... Production facilities... Is not gonna go near as far as we might hope. You know, let's face it. Yeah, I'd forgotten what a big tool that is. Ah, that worst thing said about me. Okay, just curious here. And... How are we in the... Ooh, it shows it is being dark fertilized. Do I not have... Hormal, da-da-da-da. No, that's wrong. These should all be off. Fuel usage normal, please. Plant growth normal. Plowing reg... Oh, fertilizer states, that's what's going on. And plowing... Yeah, okay. Let's save that. Oops, almost clicked quit. Alright, now let's have a look. There we go. Well, it's still showing its darkest, so I guess... I guess we kind of cheated that one in a little bit, you know what I mean? Hmm. Well, interesting. Alright, well, I'm gonna... Just because I am gonna actually do the weeding on this field. So I really, really appreciate all of your feedback on that last episode, guys. Absolutely amazing. Okay, see, that's the problem is I'm gonna have no idea where my next row is, am I? No. Alright, this is a complete waste of time. We will however require it for our next field, and of course we will require it every field we do from that point on, so... Let's, uh... Let's get started on this other project, I guess. Alright. So... 350. 3,500, 35,000, 350,000. Well, alright. Here's the other nice part, we will get to keep the money from these sheds. Which, I mean, considering we've got almost $3,000 difference between the price of the 2 is probably just gonna cover that. And I think they're open enough that I'll be able to put them down without messing with those too greatly. Alright, let's go here. Oh, there we are. Sell. Yes, okay. And... Sell, yes. Okay. And we'll also sell this. Yes. Okay. I mean, obviously, we're not getting nearly the sort of cost these things are, but hey... That's what go-green really means, isn't it? You know, it's 20K for that exact shelter with no panels. So I guess there's $30,000 worth of... Solar skin on the top of those things. Oh, it's... I don't think there's actually a fuel point on the map, which is kind of weird. I mean, no matter what you're doing, even if all you do is log, you're still gonna need fuel. There are biodiesel refineries. Problem with them is they're half the size of the map, most of them. I did find this. It's a placeable gas pump. And I guess it comes full of diesel, because all you have to do is like any other pump in the game, drive up to it and buy it. Now, I would prefer production. So I'm gonna keep looking. In the meantime, if we run low, I will place one of these. But I'm gonna keep looking and see if I can find a more reasonably sized, shall we say? Yeah, version of those things. Wow, these are a little larger than I had first imagined. Yeah. Hmm. Uh-huh. Hmm. We might have to do a complete rearranging of our thinking here. Well, apparently I can place one there. And that appears to be about our only option. I don't know why, in particular. Because that's not exactly the nicest spot. I'm gonna have to try something here first. Just see if maybe clearing these out of the way is going to... Be the answer. Or if they're simply not allowing me to place it there, which would really be a drag, because that's certainly where we need them. See what I mean by the graphical idiot, or idiots issues? Oh, boy. I'll tell ya. But yeah, those are the exact issues I was talking about. You can see it again there. Right, as I said, it's way more pronounced when you end up dumping another layer on top of what is already a painted-on layer, I guess. So, again, here where the dirt is, it's really, really, goes kind of weird. That reminds me that weird flicker that happens on the ground? Reminds me that one weird Star Trek episode from years and years ago. Well, they're all episodes from years and years ago. Get that weird shimmer in the air that everybody saw, and it was actually, see that thing? And it was actually an alien entity? Yeah. But that's what that reminds me of. I know, completely... Completely off-track, but there you go. Okay. Let's try just shoving this stuff out here. Then tired of hauling it halfway across the map. Whoop, there we go. We'll just tuck you in there. I meant to push it back a little, I'm sure I did. Okay. Just tuck you in there. Oh, oh, that's gonna be an issue. We're gonna have to reset that to town, I think. Unless I can drive over it. Here, see if we can make it go from bad to worse. Nope, it is now stuck upside down. So, that's okay. I'll reset it to town and go pick it up when I need to plow another field. Ah, the joys, the joys. Ah, let's get you out of here. Boom, chakalaka boom. There we go. Whoop. That's gonna hurt your ankle banging into that puppy, I'll tell ya. Oh, man, look at that, eh? See, this is where I wish that game extension would allow you to pick up implements. You know, or at least flip it over back onto its feet. Now I've gotta reset it all the way back into town. Alright, let's figure out if we're gonna have any more luck now with those sheds, shall we? I might have to knock a few more trees down or something, I don't know. I really don't know what their issue is with having them fit here. Yeah. Oh, I don't see anything as being interfering there, but yeah, they definitely don't seem to want to come together. Let's see if I can get myself turned around here to a better angle to this. There we go. Why can it not be placed here? Oh, wait. There's a spot. Seems to fit right there. I'm gonna place one right there. That would be just too convenient, wouldn't it? Hmm. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna get more than one up here no matter what we try and do. So... Nope, they're not gonna allow us to place a second one here or anywhere. But there we are, there's one of them. Now, I will try clearing some more area out back here. And see if we can get a second one. I mean, eventually I am gonna put a second one in here. So, but there we go. There's half, just over half of our commitment to that end of things. Dang, these things are huge, aren't they? And I suppose, since I know now that that's not going to... Interfere in any way. Or I should say, not gonna allow me to interfere in any way by putting another shed down. I think we will... Have a look at getting this guy. No, not gonna do it for me? Anywhere, anywhere? Maybe back over there? Probably will if I knock some... Wrong way, trees and such down. No, that's not gonna fit up here. So, how about these guys? Oh yeah, there's still room for them. Does seem like that grass might have something to do with not being able to place anything there though, doesn't it? So let's spin you around. And... Pop one there. Wrong way. Okay. There we are. That should be fairly well set up. And I think this shed will certainly allow us to... Put any of that into place. Oh my, that is getting pretty close to that edge, isn't it? Now, if I go to... Let's have a look at some of our venzing. Here we go. Gates, not so much. I need actual fence. Ah, I can't really see here what I'm doing. Well, it looks about even. So we'll put some fencing down there. Okay, that one's too big. Let's try a... 2-panel. That's a little better. Whoop, it's just straightened out. Yeah, not there! Okay. Wrong way. That looks about right. Man, it's hard to see, isn't it? Whoops. Okay. And now let's go to a single panel. And... I'll get you straightened out. Okay. Okay, let's see how this is looking. Alright, nice. Now at least we won't be driving over the, uh, driving over the edge. Hmm. It's kind of unfortunate how some of this works out because of the terrain, it actually sticks in. I'll bet you if I went with smaller ones, it wouldn't do that. That's what I'm thinking anyway. So let's go to our garage. And it should be the largest, 1-panel, 2-panel, 6-panel. Sell. Yes. Okay. Now, if we go back here... And go with some 2-panel fences, bye. Yeah. See, I think these will actually work out a little better for us. And then, go with a 1-panel. Now, there's not that much of a gap, is there? Okay. I mean, it may not be perfect, but hey... Well, it's my first attempt at laying some fences down here, so we're just gonna have to live with it. Alright, and of course I'll put all of my gear back into these ones. And, uh, should be good. Little gap here so we can get down here and have a look at the delights of the world. Awesome. Very, very cool. I will move all of this with the Volvo in the bucket and figure out what exactly we're going to do with it. And next time around, we will start... I mean, obviously I have a lot of work to do down here. You know? Um, oh, there's a little more to the deal. Now... I'm not gonna be putting in a... I'm not gonna be putting in a sawmill right away, but the problem is, is any wood that we take to the sawmill in town is basically gonna go through the whole, you know... What I usually like, the value added, but what I understand the biggest beef of this map is, is there's too much value added. You know, like apparently if we, you know, go to where the pallets, etc. In fact, well, it's gonna make the episode run away too long. But we'll have a look at that the next time around. But it's something to think on is, you know, a wood plant is 200,000. So, most of what we have allotted, you know? Now, we can't afford it, you know, but then we also have the issue of wood and chips kind of taken care of. We can continue to sell the wood directly off the pier, which I may do. And the wood chips, of course, we get paid to use them to heat our own property. So, I think I may go that with it. Now, the city has said, "We have 100,000 liter of wood sitting in that wood plant being processed." Now, the city has offered us 40K for it. I don't know that that's that great a deal, but it's probably a better deal than, you know, what they're gonna offer us if we allow it to go through the next stage. So I think I may just do that and write off what we have there. So... But there you go, guys, hope you enjoyed the episode, it's, uh... Well, gonna get bigger and better from here. Uh, this stuff, obviously, I need to sell some of this. And we will do that very quickly. I believe there's probably a full belt of fish waiting for us down there, etc., etc. So, um... But yeah, I am going to knock a flat spot back here. Just continue this on and, uh... See if I can't get that second shed put in. It dips down a little bit there, but nothing too horrible, I don't think. So, there you go, guys, hope you enjoyed the episode. If you did, please leave lots of comments, let me know what you think, and we're gonna carry on next time. So, take care of each other and ciao for now.